Thursday, April 7th, School Board Meeting to Orders. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, in whose law is liberty and justice our.
Member Smith, please state your call.
Certainly. Member Corcoran is at it. Member Kettle, here. Member Lansstrom, here. Member Raithill, here. Member Tyson's here. Member Peterson, here. And member Luther, here.
At this time, I entertain a motion to approve tonight's meeting agenda.
Kettle, so hold.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We will move on to scheduled and unscheduled visitors. And before you give your report, Member Lansstrom, if anybody else would like to speak, please fill out one of these green cards. You are limited to a topic that's on the agenda and a maximum of three minutes. And with that, we have a listening session. Member Lansstrom.
We had a lot of lovely people come today. They had great community participation. We had topics such as CRT, our 529 policy, and transportation.
Thank you, Member Lansstrom. We'll move on. We have one green card. Erin Rebar. Did I say that right?
Yes, that's right. Hello, Forest Lake School Board. My name is Erin Rebar. I'm here today to discuss inclusion in Forest Lake schools, especially as it pertains to our students with disabilities. My son Benjamin is a five-year-old kid with a huge heart, big smile, and sometimes an even bigger attitude. Benjamin also happens to have Down Syndrome. He has been enrolled in Forest Lake Schools since March of 2020, when our family moved to a new home. Between then and now, we have worked and continue to work with Special Education Team to ensure that Benjamin's needs are met and to set goals for him through his Individualized Education Plan, or IEP. I am so grateful for the Special Education Department and the progress I've seen in Benjamin these past two years, in spite of the challenges we've had during the coronavirus pandemic and Benjamin's health concerns. Unfortunately, Benjamin and his classmates are missing out on a huge opportunity that can benefit every student. That opportunity is inclusion, real meaningful inclusion from the beginning of their education that allows students to create organic friendships. Meaningful inclusion has proven to have better short-term and long-term outcomes for students with and without disabilities. In fact, the right to inclusive education is currently supported by the Individuals with Disabilities Act. The IDEA, IDEAs, least restrictive environment, or mainstreaming policy requires public schools to educate students with disabilities in regular classrooms with their non-disabled peers in their neighborhood schools to the maximum extent appropriate. To do this, we need to allow all our students to start out in the general education setting with supports and modifications they need to be successful. Students should not have to earn the right to be in a general education class because of their perceived ability or perceived intensity of support. Our family's hope for Benjamin is that he can be a valued member of our community, that he can play on the playground with your child, and they won't be afraid of him and run away, or even worse, pity him. I hope that your kids can come home and are excited to share with you how they made a new friend like Ben, ate lunch with a child like Ben, or sat down on the floor and built Legos with a student like Ben. I hope someday we can all have a friend like Ben, because if you're anything like me, it took having a child with a disability to truly understand that he belongs everywhere that anyone else does. We want Benjamin to be seen as a whole person, one that is capable, hardworking, and worthy of being in class with his non-disabled peers. Segregated classes in Forest Lake exist, and I know because Benjamin's in one. This needs to change. Your students deserve the opportunity to be supported and educated in the same room as their neighbors and siblings. They need your help. I don't know how to tell you this, but we're doing it wrong. I look forward to addressing your concerns, sharing ideas, and resources so that our schools can be truly inclusive. Please reach out to me via phone or email. You may also come visit me at the next Forest Lake Special Education Advisory Council meeting on Wednesday, May 11, at 5:00 p.m. in the Step Program Building. Thank you for your time and the work you do as a school board member.
Thank you, Erin. I can fill other green cards. We will move on to student achievement. We have student report, Community Schools, Student Council.
Good evening, Superintendent Dr. Massey, School Board members and community members. I'm Kelly Lefine, Principal of the Alternative Learning School in the district. I'm also in charge of all the alternative programming in the district, as you are aware. So I'm proud to showcase the work of our students and teachers at the community school this evening. Please welcome Ally Litvina, high school senior, who will highlight the work of our Positive Action Leaders Group this year. Ally also attended the curriculum and instruction and equity committee meetings for our district as a student representative this year. The PALS group meets once a week as a group with staff to facilitate interrogation. Welcome, Ally.
Hello. So with lots of Action Leaders PALS, through leaders of Forest Lake Community School, we've been doing a bunch of different projects to help the school with that. All right, okay. We recreated the community school like, how would you better work this? Like, how would you? This is a matrix? No, matrix. It's far as long and wordy. Not a lot of people read it. For instance, students would just look over it and ignore it. So we shortened it to all this. They get much easier to read and have people follow it more efficiently. We also did a PVS rewards, which was little shout-out cards to, when someone does something good, you do like to be recognized for it. And we like to show that the teachers and students are doing good. So we have one for each teacher and students. And each week, we pull the cards out of a drawing thing and do a little prize. We have like a little spin and wheel thing. Super fun. And then for shout-out rewards, we have, well, ten points actually kind of, for example, you can win that, you can win Time with Geo, which is like a little lizard we have at our school, and then dim time, which is like, either or, this is a great alternative to make the school a better place. And then we also did student job surveys. The average number of hours worked per week was 26 per student. Thirty-three out of 80 students, or 41% of our school, have been timed recording. And the national average, 4% of students working is 17.6% pre-COVID and 30% of students post-COVID. So it kind of shows that majority of our students are working, and they still have time to do their schoolwork and still have time to get everything done. It kind of shows we're pretty efficient with that. And then touring the eighth-grade students, so me and my friend Ally toured around the eighth-grade students, and we toured every room, helped with registrations, maybe able to look forward to high school if they have their rec thing, I almost for me, and then helped with answering questions and maybe advice. Then we also have a community closet, which Terry started. And so like, for instance, if you just don't have that many clothes, or like different outfits to wear, or if you like, don't like an outfit or do get dress coded, you have an alternative. Also, she has prom dresses in there, which I did wear last year, which is super nice. And then, yeah, so we started a community closet in the classroom at the CLC. Students and staff brought clothes in that they no longer needed, and they found available students who wanted them. The clothing has come in many ways and times, and no one has to feel nervous about needing something. We also have shoes, clothing, and toiletries, which is super nice. Celebrations and social events for this year was, the end of the first semester celebration was an escape room and homely pizza. And then the end of the year will be a woodland, whimsy, kind of fun little thing, really like somewhat advanced-ish. I don't know. We thought it'd be fun and a good way to celebrate the end of the year, and we're all super excited at the CLC for it. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, our Special Education Team will present this evening on an example of project-based instruction, which is an approach that is designed to give students the opportunity to develop knowledge and skills through engaging projects and set around challenges and problems that they may face in the real world. Project-based learning is more than just doing a project. With project-based learning, students investigate and respond to an authentic, engaging, and complex problem or challenge. The PPL model focuses on open-ended questions, a challenge, or a problem for the student to research. It encompasses what standard skills the student should know and be able to do to demonstrate an understanding of the concept. The model stimulates intrinsic curiosity and generates questions to help students seek answers. It incorporates skills such as critical thinking, communication, collaboration, creativity, and working with a team. It also builds student choice and teamwork with others. It provides feedback, opportunities to revise the plan if needed, just like in real life. It requires students to present their problems, embed the research process, and also methods and results such as scientific research or real-world projects are designed in the real world as well. I'm proud to introduce our Spen team at the community school as they present, thinking outside the box. Linda Lindeman, Special Education Teacher at Flax for four, let's see, Flax, been there for two years, four years in the district, two years at Wyoming Elementary, 35 years as a Spen teacher, lives in North Branch with spouse John, and three dogs. She also has two children, Ben and Jenna, and four grandchildren. Tammy Laner, Spen Para at Forest Lake Gary Community School, started in the district in 1995 at Wyoming Elementary in Title One. In 2015, transitioned to Special Education at Montessori Elementary, and then transferred to the community school after Montessori closed in 2018. She lives in Forest Lake with her spouse Gary, where they raised four children, all Forest Lake grads. Please welcome our Special Education Department. Thank you, Kelly. Well, thank you for letting us share with you tonight some projects that we've been working on, on the community school. In March of 2020, educators were faced with unique challenges, as we all know. This was beyond anything any of us could have ever imagined. How do you keep students engaged in learning while dealing with their mental health, not only theirs, but within our own lives? We learned quickly that this was going to be an uphill battle. Now let's fast forward. It's Tuesday, September 7, 2021, the first day of school. Classes are back in full session, Monday through Friday. Distant learning is no longer on the table. There are students in our building that are well aware they have slipped through some cracks. How do we get those students back on track? It's time to think outside of the box.
Boy, Tammy, I appreciate that with my balance that we had to think outside the box to modify the box.
She told me I can't step on it.
I can't step on it. Anyway, so, well, hey, Tammy, welcome back. Are you ready to start the school year?
Yes, but I'm a little worried about what we are walking into. I know some of our students are going to be very anxious and think that the goal of graduating is not even an option for them.
Oh, I can understand that. Last year, it seemed like we had three school years rolled into one. Started out hybrid, moving to distance, and then to come back full-time Monday through Thursday with the option of distance learning still in there for seven students.
So how do we proceed?
Well, we are going to get creative and think outside of the box.
What does that look like?
Yeah, well, I'll let you know in a minute. But, you know, we're always told to think like students get in their world, and I know so many kids wear packs, but I have no idea how they do that all day.
And they play basketball wearing it.
I know, and my, oh, excuse me, that's so much better. Anyway, not going to make it that way. But, okay, so we're going to start brainstorming and come up with a new idea. Have you ever heard of project-based learning?
No, but tell me more.
Well, it's a concept that I have been researching. It involves a lot what Kelly has already said about students working together on a project, maybe for a week, a month, maybe even a semester. The focus is to engage students in solving a real problem or answering a complex question.
Okay, so what would our students take from this? What will they even gain?
Well, they demonstrate their skills and knowledge by creating a public product or presentation for a real audience, not just within the classroom, but for a real audience. Not that the classroom isn't a real audience, but it's beyond, going beyond that. They develop deep content knowledge, critical thinking, collaboration, creativity, and communication skills. It's out of the box, and hopefully will create a new level of engagement for our students and their childrens.
Okay, so what kind of project are we talking about here?
Well, one specific idea that keeps popping in my head is a sensory pathway for preschool students that can be designed inside or outside of the building.
Oh, okay. It's an opportunity for students to get the fidgets out by using a movement slash brain break.
Yes, and other benefits are to help them focus, improve spatial awareness, and balance in self-regulation.
Okay, but now we need some ideas.
Yeah, and it makes a lot more sense if you watch a short video on students actually participating in a sensory hallway. I will email you the link. I'm also going to have to email Kelly and Amy, Cory and Bethany to get their input, because I'm sure we're going to have to have lots of meetings to figure out the logistics if this project is approved.
All right, let's do this. And so the journey began. In September, when Linda and I approached three of our second-year seniors about incorporating project-based learning into their afternoon school day, we were met with apprehensiveness, hesitation, and flat-out disbelief as to why this would even work. These three were at a crossroads. They were upset with themselves for not staying on track, for not putting in a lot of effort, and for not seeing that big picture. As we explained that taking on a project would integrate reading, math, skills, science, and other skills without the use of worksheets, and that they would be taking ownership of this project, they began to see the bigger picture. When we presented the sensory hallway, it was the funniest thing, they were like three deer in headlights. None of them had even heard of a sensory hallway, let alone when we told them, you're going to design it and you're going to construct it. In late September and over the course of the next four months, they did just that. They researched, they designed, and constructed a sensory hallway for early childhood at the education center. Days were spent watching YouTube videos and researching the benefits of children engaging in physical activities. They researched and studied child development and the developmental abilities of three- to five-year-olds. They studied gross motor skills and the ability to follow directions. They created layouts and prioritized materials and preparations. Using a tile sample of the new hallway in our building, they tested the vinyl material being used for strength and durability. By late November, they were ready to lay out a mock hallway. Using a roll of cracked paper, the design was laid out and modified several times to get the best results. At this point, it was quickly learned that there are times you may get constructive criticism, and you have to bring your ideas back to the drawing board. This was a lesson well learned. In December, the final stages of the project were drawing near, and installation plans were being presented. As luck would have it, or maybe not for some, we went into distant learning, leading up to winter break. This gave the opportunity, though, to install with no foot traffic. These three young men, who by this time had taken full ownership of this project, came in during distant learning and with pride and hard work executed their plan. After break, the installation of three sensory wall stations, actually using students to determine age-appropriate heights, was completed. Early childhood students were now able to enjoy the hard work of three high school students. And on January 21, 2022, these men graduated with tremendous pride. Oh, look at them. Prior to graduation, we had them take part in a community service project self-reflection. And here are some of the things they learned about themselves through this experience.
We had, there were more questions, but again, for Tammy and I to move forward with this concept, we had to have the student feedback and input. And I went through and just picked out some of their responses. Final thoughts on the project, now that the project's done. One said it was very humbling, watching how happy the children were going through. Favorite part was finishing it, because you can see the little ones do what you made. And it's a great feeling to see them happy and excited about something you made. This, I thought, was a very important one. How will you use what you've learned during this process in the future? Little things can have a huge impact, working as a team and listening to others. What was the one thing they discovered about themselves and would like to work to improve? Communicating. We had one student overthink. And then the one that worked on his drive and work ethic, so he could get tasks done without doubting himself. We saw tremendous growth in these three young men that, yeah, it was just fantastic. And challenging moments, keeping things straight. We had a couple of students that would go, that looks right. And then another one that go, nope, 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 we have to change it. And so... I had one actually the next day came back and said, I thought about it all night. We got to go rip that vinyl back up. It's got to be straighter than that. I went, oh, you're acting boy after my own heart. And so this whole project exceeded my expectations. And yes, we had a few moments where we were wondering if it was going to be completed because of that. You know, with the students finally, like Tammy said, bought into it and moved forward.
Okay, what if, what we as adults have taken from this is the benefits of increasing a student's involvement, commitment, and ownership in their learning is extremely valuable. This is not a one-and-done deal. We continue to research new project ideas and are currently involving new students to carry on this tradition and implement our visions into their educational journeys. In fact, I don't know if you can see this. I had a student just finish this today. Everyone is welcome. This is going to go down in early childhood. It is in sign language. He drew this. He measured everything out using math skills. I said, oh my gosh, you were figuring out how to center all this. And he goes, I was using math. I went, yes, you were using math. And it's just phenomenal. It's just phenomenal. I love it. And at this time, we'd like to show this same student helped me with this right here, similar project that I've got laid out here. This is called, we're calling this the portable sensory mats that can be used inside or outside, depending on the need. We took two yoga mats, we put them together for a length of about 14 feet, I think it is. Gives enough space for a quick movement break, designed with colorful hopscotch decals, as you can tell, for hopping and bouncing on one foot, all while counting to 10, jumping into a spin, and then moving onto a bear walk where they can growl as they morph into the imaginary world of a bear. This is also an example of how you can have a vision, but you might have to go back to the drawing table and start thinking of ways that you can make it work, because we roll it up, the decals would fall off. We washed the mat down. I took alcohol, tried to get anything off of it, put the decals down, they come off. So then we started researching, what is the strongest tape? Oh, gorilla tape. I'll tell you, gorilla tape is fantastic. I have rolled this up so many different times, and that, those decals are not going anywhere. So this can be easily sanitized and rolled up for storage. It can be brought into a classroom for just a quick whatever. It can be brought outside to the playground. It can be brought on a field trip, whatever. So we're, him and I are going to present this to early childhood sometime in the next couple of weeks, so that they can use it throughout their spring and summer programs. Through this whole process, we have learned we all have a metaphorical toolbox that we can go into to find strategies to be successful. It's not necessarily about how many tools you have in that said toolbox, but more how we combine them to find ways to solve the challenges we face in our studies. When you see a hammer, you most likely think of a nail. But sometimes the tool that makes the most sense to you is not readily available. I, for one, have used a wrench to put a nail in the wall. In other words, you might have to get creative and use a different tool to succeed. What is important is our ability to use the tools we have to solve the problems that arise. Our three students did just that. Project-based learning allowed them to reach into their toolbox where they applied whatever tool was needed to effectively set new standards for themselves. Not only was the project met with great success, but their required classes that they were taking at the community school were met with dedication and achievement. Finding integrative ways of learning that gets students to be excited about being present during the school day is definitely thinking outside the box. Thank you for letting us share our experience. Anybody have any question, comments? If not?
Member Tyson?
Well, I just want to say, you know, your passion and your energy and enthusiasm is just like contagious. I'm just like over here going, wow. But you know, the beauty of this is that we're doing things, this project-based learning, we're doing things for students in our building, like the students in our preschool are getting the, reaping the rewards of these projects, which is so phenomenal in your home. This portable sensory mat is really cool. And how much did it cost to make it?
I think it was like maybe $60?
Wow.
Yeah, we probably spent... Oh, yeah. We got really creative. Yeah. All the materials, all the decals and things.
You guys could go and shark tank.
Well, there are companies, well, you can order, order ready-made. It's like $1,500. There's actually a company in the United States that will come to your school for $1,500 just to consult. That does not include materials, so.
Well, please congratulate the gentleman that were behind this project-based learning, and it's just wonderful. I hope it continues.
I can't wait to hear more.
I hope so, too.
And just want to thank Cory, Kelly, Kelly and Kelly, and Bethany, who is the coordinator for early childhood. It was one of those things that, again, with an idea, and it just, it takes my breath away.
And it just, it was, in fact, I go down occasionally and look to make sure that the vinyl is holding up, because we do have enough vinyl to, if we have to take something up and put something back down. But I just had a mom the other day, and her daughter was doing it, and I said, I said something to her, and she goes, I can't get her out of the building. She just wants to toss over and over again. And that warms my heart, because it's like, I mean, these boys work so hard. I was so proud of them.
I just wanted to really compliment the effort you put into making something that made them want to be in school. And that's when we, when we did so much work on the bonded levy, it was to defend programs that are not just math, science, social studies, like, because sometimes the reason people come is football, or chess, or whatever, the art classes that they're really interested in. So I'm, it's great that you found a way that enticed them to come. And I'm sure you have a list now of all the different projects that you can backpocket, like, oh, these kids will be pulled in by that, those kids will be pulled in by this. like, "Oh, these kids will be pulled in by that. Those kids will be pulled in by this."
And we did emphasize with these three seniors that they were the forerunners of this. And depending on how it succeeded or failed would dictate the future. And so...
They did seriously.
They did extremely serious. Yeah. And after graduation ceremony, they took their parents down to the early childhood part of the building to show them, which, yeah. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Principal Feen, and I've forgotten the student's name. I apologize.
Ally.
Ally, thank you so much for your report as well. Great report. And now we'll move on to positive happenings. Does anybody have anything they'd like to share?
I participated in the MSBA action Thursday on March 7th. Senator Zack Duckworth was there, who's the Senate Assistant Majority Leader. Melissa Hortman was there, who's the Speaker of the House. Terry Yetter was there, who's the Director of School Finance, the School Finance Division at MDE. Denise Dietrich and Kimberly Dunn-Lewis were there from the MSBA Government Relations staff. I also attended a TEFL board meeting on Monday, March 21st. I attended a tour of Carter Blue Education Center with the superintendent and the council, and her council on Wednesday, March 23rd. The Forest Lake School District, if we're not aware, now currently has nine students who attend Carter Blue, so it's good to attend that school and see and take a tour. One more about it. I met with Ariana Larson, who's a constituent in my neighborhood, is interested in running for the school board this year. Spent some time with her, talking about what we do as a school board, et cetera. And she's very interested in possibly running for the local small. Last but hardly least, I attended a TEFL virtual grants committee meeting to discuss and vote on a new grant that has surfaced from the community. And that ends my report.
Kettle, anyone else?
Yeah, I went to the orchestra, had a fundraiser with Billy McLaughlin. It was great. Yeah, it was really good. He played opening, opening, and then he played with the orchestra. It was just a really fun time and very inspirational. And he was actually my guitar teacher in about 1986. I hadn't seen him in 20, 20 years, so it was really fun. And it was fun to see the jazz band again and getting people together like that.
And just in my ever, just to let you know before you can say it, went to the middle school open house. And I really enjoyed their format of showcasing the art in the hallways and the music. They had the orchestra and the band, and it was solos. So it's, it's a lot nicer way to see what your children are doing in the upper levels than just meeting every teacher. And, and they did have the teachers kind of clustered so you could just walk into your child's wing and talk to everybody at the same time. So it was very, very well done. And the other one is I went to the Sound of Music. It was a community event locally. It was very well done. Lots of our students were in it. But it was not a school-sponsored thing, but it was very, very well done at one of the local churches. It was very good.
Professor Tyson?
I recently went to the FFA banquet, which is always just such a remarkable event. Mr. Caldwell reminded the group that that was the last event ever held before everything came to a grinding stop. So needless to say, everybody was so excited to be there again. And I'm always amazed. I sat with a wonderful family and with Karen Orkin, her son Jim. And this family was so fun and friendly as all, all are. But then later on, their son got up on the stage with all the decor going on and spoke. And it's just really wonderful how they learn those leadership skills in FFA. So it was really fun to have banquet again. I also went to visit, they spoke about the community closet. So Chad Isaacs-Rude is the Secondary Special Ed Coordinator. And I went before they moved into the building. And he had this big map. They were plotting and planning. So it was really fun to see it again and see how organized and how everything just came through to fruition. They had a room that was just all their equipment for physical therapy. The next room was all organized for occupational therapy. The classrooms in there are beautiful and amazing. They're, they're set up really wonderfully with soft lighting. And the hallways are beautiful and wide for walking in the halls. And visiting the community closet, I, I realized and remembered that it was a TEFL grant and where they got the funding for that. So, and like they stated, most of it was all donated. We helped families in their restriction. So it was really fun to see all the work that they've done and how that building is just meant to be for them. It just is a perfect fit, so that's it for me.
Thank you, Ambassador Tyson. Anyone else?
Oh, I was gonna mention one thing. They are voting on the capital with our cross-subsidiary bureau. So I did send in my, my letters to Chamberlain and Senator Halsley, getting that out there. So hopefully they're getting us on helping with their funding to bring down the cross-subsidiary special ed.
I just have one more thing. I, I went to, to an event with somebody who graduated with my daughter, but she had gone out of state for college and had to come back and I was just moving back. And she made the mistake of asking me what was happening on the school board. And I explained for about 35 minutes all about the bond and how great it was getting that passed and all the things we did to reconstruct the district and how we made it academically better and how we did, you gotta see the science wings and you gotta see that. And I, it just brought her all the way through to the, to the sports stadium. And it was just like, man, we've done a lot of good things here. And it's just been such a great team effort. And after I got done, and, you know, you know, I was thinking afterwards, yeah, this is a great place. I mean, it's, we've done amazing work here, the staff and everybody getting this school to where we are today. And so, I don't, I just thought I'd mention that.
I also had the opportunity to attend the middle school spring showcase, I think is what they officially titled it, which was great. We saw the band playing. I also, the one day before, had the opportunity to go to the teacher dinner the PTA put on and help set up and clean up for that. And had to speak with a lot of the middle school teachers, which is always nice to get a feel for what's going on there. And then I did attend the AG Advisory Board. And the great part about that was seeing former member Morehead and touring the greenhouse over there, which is always great. And I'm looking forward to getting the flowers for our landscaping once those are ready. Anyone else, anything else? All right, we'll move on to, backed by popular demand, reports of workshops and committees. Does anybody have any workshops or conferences they'd like to report on? Hearing none, we will move on to 916. Member Kettle?
The board met in person on, last night, on Wednesday, April 6th, at the district offices for Northeast Metro in White Bear Lake. I, as newly-elected Treasurer of Northeast Metro Board, I met with Mark Cumlin, who's the Executive Director of Finance, and with Jamin Wood, who's the Supervisor of Building and Grounds to review the long-term facility maintenance and LPFM district allocation for fiscal year 2024. The proposed allocation for Forest Lake, for the Forest Lake District is 6.39% of the total amount, and it amounts to $17,709 for fiscal year 2024. Highlights, a couple of highlights from the board meeting include an MSBA National School Board Association Conference Report, which was given by two of the representatives on board who had attended the national convention. It included a presentation, "Leading the Way to the Power of Podcasting to Educate Parents and Patrons," by the Jordan School District, which is located near Salt Lake City, Utah. I found that extremely interesting because they said that by having the podcasts, which are run on a regular basis, they actually attract more people to their website as well as sharing all kinds of great information in a different format. Which, if you're familiar with podcasts, that's what it is. It's a podcast format. I did share the link with Renee Reedy. She thought it was interesting and she's gonna look into that a little bit more. A presentation was also given on diversity, equity, and inclusion by Shania Walker, who's a new DDI manager for Northeast Metro. And the superintendent's report was presented, which included that the new joint partnership agreement is now official with all member districts, 13 districts approving the joint partnership agreement. And it will now include an annual review, which had never been done before, with member districts, superintendents, and 916 district leadership. The first annual meeting is scheduled for May 18th. That can be the JP, the JBA reunion. And we ended the meeting with a closed session to discuss the labor negotiation strategy for the teachers' contract coming up. And that ends my report on that.
Member Kettle, we'll move to buildings and grounds. Go ahead.
I have a question, Professor Kettle. Are they having their flag raising, their golf tournament?
Yes, they actually, ironically, tonight, they're having their gala event at one of the vineyards in the local area. So they're having that tonight, and then they're having golf tournament. I can get you the date. I can't remember off the top of my head, but it's coming up in May, June. So I'll share that with everybody soon.
Thank you.
Yes.
Great question.
Thanks for the question.
All right, we'll move on to buildings and grounds. Also, Member Kettle?
The meeting was held virtually on Thursday, March 17th. Topics included large project updates and maintenance items, as we do each month. We were updated on the ice arena refrigeration plant, which is our, one of our main ongoing projects in the district. All-American Arena Products was awarded bid to complete the project, which is slated to begin next spring, not this spring. So we'll have this year in-house and then next year it will be out for a while. We've signed contracts with Apex Construction, the manager of the project. Mark Pezner has the engineer and 292 Design is an architect. The budget is estimated to be roughly $5 million for the entire project. Director Martini presented paving projects that will be going on, projected for this summer, including blacktop and concrete for both the parking lots and sidewalk repairs. Chad Martin from Mark Pezner presented an update on commissioning. Bill Schwartz presented a maintenance update, including the purchase of special chairs for a potential, let's hope it happens, outdoor graduation. The new turf that has been put up in the field requires different types of chairs so that we're not cutting holes or scraping the, the turf material. So we had to buy special chairs specifically for that. We discussed the financial donation that's been estimated at over $27,000 from the Hallberg Foundation to support the ice arena as well as purchasing a new Zamboni for the, for the ice arena. And that concludes the report. I'm Billy.
Thank you, Member Kettle. We'll move on to City of Forest Lake. Member Luther?
City of Forest Lake had their planning meeting. There was two new developments. They were discussing their plaits. One, very new, that they don't even have a lot, swear away on it yet. But it will be majority single-family detached homes. And then a different development that is a mix of single-family and then attached and then singles, also just the blend of the different housing styles. And what's interesting between both of them, lots of questions from the Planning Commission on sidewalks and trails and creating space and ensuring that all the codes are met, that they are going to be making it a nice addition to the town, not just as many possible houses as can be fit in the land. So those are nice to see those questions being brought up. On the other side of things, there were endless requests for variances to make things smaller or, or less desirable. So, you know, everything kind of goes around, comes around. But I, I'm happy to see our Planning Commission working hard to keep Forest Lake a good town to live in. And there'll be quite a few families moving into these homes. So that's more kids in school, I hope. And that concludes Forest Lake.
Member Luther, we'll go to Communications Committee. Member Ty, Member Rayfield?
Yeah. So we talked about Community Ed Education, marketing, marketing and communications. They always do a fantastic job with their flyer, and we talked about that. And District, we looked at our district marketing, looked at enrollment and the communication around that.
Rayfield, Community Education. Member Kettle?
There was no meeting held in March for Community Education. However, I asked Director McKinnon for an update, just so we had something for the meeting tonight. Community Ed has been very busy in all departments. The Spring and Summer Catalogue has just come out, as we know, and registrations are coming in for summer programming. Community Ed softball and baseball has 550 participants. I had to read that number a couple of times. 550 participants for grades, for age four to grade six. Our pool numbers have been off the charts and youth and adult programs classes have been filling up as much as ever. School-age care has 153 students enrolled for the summer SAC, which will be offered at Lina Heights Forest View in Wyoming Elementary. Community Ed has also got accepting contracts for next year's preschool classes. In all, for most of the programs, in Community Ed, it's, they're seeing enrollments and participating numbers surpassing those before the pandemic, which I think is outstanding and shows a lot of credit for what Community Ed has done during the pandemic itself and how they kept things going. The next Community Education Advisory Board meeting will be held Monday, April 18th at 6:30 PM. And that concludes my report on Community Ed.
Thank you, Member Kettle. We'll move to Curriculum, Instruction, and Equity. Ambassador Tyson?
Yes, Jill Crowcrimer is the district psychologist. And she gave an update on our social-emotional learning, second step in adult resiliency. What I learned from this is that the funding comes from the Wellspring Project, an MDE, and part of it is SHIP, Health Improvement Project. So we have now implemented it, and she gave us this nice timeline for how everything began. And in January of 2020, we did the application. Of course, I won't read the whole thing, but the social-emotional learning, the second step, got implemented in the younger grades, March 2021. And then in September 2021, we went to E8. Everyone had it implemented at the middle school level. So we all know that that's just an important foundation to have that social-emotional learning in place. So it was a really exciting report from her. She will have some meetings, information coming up with long-term indicators, what they're seeing as far as improvements in those areas. But the cohorts with teachers, and there's even been a parent professional cohort, they all fill that right away, again, they fill that right away. So we applied for more grant funding through Washington County, through Wellspring Project. And it looks like we're gonna get that and keep those cohorts going. So that was very, very good to hear that update. The other thing, we have a K through six ELA instruction review update from Katie Lorenz and JP Jacobson, our Director of Teaching Learning. And they have been doing a lot of due diligence with vendors, excuse me, and reviewing all these different crit systems that are available, doing their due diligence and picking the one that really fits our student and the criteria that they want. So that concludes my report.
Thank you, Ambassador Tyson. We'll move to Equity in our Schools. Member Rayfield?
Yes, thank you. Forest Lake Area Schools' Mong and Asian Culture Club will host its first traditional celebration night on Thursday, May 12th, starting at 5:00 p.m. in the auditorium. The night will consist of performances by a dance company of Forest Lake Area Schools' Mong and Asian Culture Club students. A food truck with traditional foods will also be available. Mong and Asian Culture Club is advised by FLHS Social Studies Teacher Trevor Cole and Cultural Liaison Long Ray. This celebration is part of Forest Lake Area Schools' Recognition of Asian American Pacific Islander Heritage Month, a national recognition of the contributions of Asian American Pacific Islanders to our country. The Teaching and Learning Department supports the AAPI Heritage Month with a list of supplemental curricular resources to support Forest Lake educators. The traditional celebration night is supported in part by TEFL in a partnership with Forest Lake Area Schools.
I have one question, sorry. What time was it on Saturday?
5:00 p.m.
5:00 p.m.?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
And where, where?
It's at the high school auditorium. Yeah, and I can send out a link. Brad has a document that has a lot of his information in it, and I can send that out as well. And, because he puts, every month, he puts everything.
Thank you, Member Rayfield. We'll move to the Finance Committee. Member Portier Bass, member Hines, do you want to?
Yes, so we did a review of the current finance. We're pretty much on target, so month after month, we're spending as we expected in year, in line with the year for projections. The medical accounts are still high. And there were discussing premium increases and other ways to control expenses with partnership with users. And then we talked about some of the bills that are going through legislature. The C tax relief bill is trying to index levies to inflation. And there was a review of quite a few other bills, including some for keeping school meals and mental health and requiring finance courses. So there's about 10 different finance, um, bills going through for education that would impact finance. So keeping an eye on those, and that concludes your report.
Thank you, Member Luther. We'll move to Policy Committee. Member Lance Room?
Yes, we reviewed two policies that are on the agenda tonight. Student discipline policy, it was an annual review, and student attendance policy was a good discussion, as that had not been reviewed since 2017. So you'll see those changes on tonight's agenda. And I also want to say the rumor has that we might be going to be in-person next community meeting, and I would highly recommend that. Policy is very good code for me online, so I'd rather have my full policies in front of me and go through it. That concludes my report.
And I second the motion.
It's all over.
Considered, considered. All right, we'll move on to Staff Welfare. Member Rayfield, did you want to report? Member Luthner.
I was not at that.
You're right.
Sorry, I do not have a report.
All right, we'll move on. Superintendent, report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think I would be with this if I had to get the COVID updates, so let me start with that, because they're all the way. It's kind of in the back of my mind, isn't it, a little bit? For the last three weeks, three weeks ago, we had zero student cases, zero staff cases. Last week, two student cases, zero staff cases. This week, zero student cases, four staff cases across the district. COVID, as we know throughout the community, is low across the community and the state, and we're seeing the same, having the same experience, so super good news. Our bus situation is stable, at about two to three bus routes per day being canceled. As often as we bring on a new driver to be trained, and you see those in your classified report, we have drivers that go out through illness or surgeries or vacations. So we're always balancing, we think we've got a route covered, and then we get absences or illness. Nonetheless, we're in better shape now than we were several months ago, and we continue to work to fill those uncovered routes. And the plan is to need a person in our next, in half the period, so we'll kind of come full circle and have that in place. A quick update on the legislature. The, our transportation bill is included in the House, $1.6 billion expenditure bill, supplemental spending bill in the House. The Senate spending bill is about $35 million. You can see the difference between the Senate supplemental spending bill and the House's supplemental spending bill. Then we'll get those moved out of committees, and then Congress committees will lead, and hopefully, the Senate will come forward with more expenditures, simply toward education funding, that special education cross subsidies, money's on the formula, money's toward the English language learner subsidy. Hopefully, the Senate can agree to include our transportation subsidy bill. It's included in the Governor's line item budget as well. So we're in a good spot, but we need the Senate to come, come up from the current levels of spending. So stay tuned, it's going to start to lively up the legislature. We are scheduled for our first home track meet since 19, Mr. Caldwell, 94? A long time. Let's just say a long time. And that's scheduled on April 14th, while they're pending. And we do get snowed out, and that's certainly possible, and it's May 10th. We did hold, ahead of almost every school in metro, our first varsity JV and varsity softball meeting on our auxiliary turf field. We've had kids at our varsity field and the auxiliary field since middle of March, when the snow has gone practicing, a month ahead of schedule from previous years. So those facilities, as Member Rayfield mentioned earlier, has been just a tremendous equity to the district, and our kids are taking advantage of them almost every day. We have 16 nominees for the Hall of Fame. The Hall of Fame Committee met yesterday, earlier this week, on Tuesday, and we are beginning to process through those nominees, and we'll be giving letters out to those who will be inducted, doing the academic award ceremony into the Hall of Fame, both the District Hall and in the Arts and Math League. The last update I would provide for you is I'm scheduled later this month, along with Director Martini and other staff of the District to meet with our mayors and administrators throughout the communities that we serve. We bring them in once, maybe twice a year. We sit around the table here and we share updates from our respective communities, housing developments, staffing developments, program developments, so that we can collaborate and the District can share updates and collaborate with our local communities as well. And that concludes my report.
Questions, comments for Dr. Massey?
What, what time are the festivities going to track me? Like four?
I think it's four o'clock, Mr. Caldwell.
I believe that is correct, but I'm, I was under the guise of showing that.
We'll be doing a lot of promotion for that, and I'll get that in my weekend update.
Thank you.
And what else? How much questions?
I did enjoy the COVID update, I'm glad, but it looks like it was.
All right, with that, we will move on to approve tonight's consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion.
Second.
Motion second. All those in favor of approving tonight's consent agenda, signify by aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We'll move on to action items. A1, donations. Member Kettle.
For this month, we have received, the District has received $17,684.31. $4,877.38 was donated by the Forest Lake Girls Lacrosse Boosters to pay for an assistant coach for the 21-22 season. $4,842.06 were donated by the Forest Lake Boys Lacrosse Boosters for a payment for boys assistant coach for 21-22 season. $4,653 was donated by the Forest Lake Gymnastics Boosters as payment for a gymnastics coach for the 21-22 season. $1,998 was donated by the Forest Lake FFA alumni for the Forest Lake Area High School FFA affiliation fees. $612.55 was donated by Cedar East Bethel Lions Club for the Lindwood Elementary School supplies. $333.79 was donated by the Blue Lion Club as payment toward a coach bus trip to Duluth on February 26th. $200 was donated by the Hugo American Legion Post 620 for the Forest Lake FFA chapter for student, the student organization account. $200 was donated by the City of Scandia as a donation to the classroom, who had the winning student entry in the story writing contest. $20 was donated by Target Cyber Grants for Lionel Lakes Elementary General Use, and we had two donations of goods and materials, one by marketing incentive resources for various classroom office materials, like post-it notes, dry erase boards, and wall safety. And by Bob Gore was the second donation for various classroom and office materials, again, post-it notes, batteries, Scotch reusable tabs. Again, the total was $17,684.31. I would like to make a motion at this point that the school board accept, with much appreciation, those contributions and permit their designated use as stated by the donors.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion.
Those are amazing donations, and it's really nice to see the Lions Club of Lindwood and the City of Scandia, so we're just so blessed.
Any other comments, questions? All those in favor of accepting tonight's donation, signify by aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. We'll move to A2, adopt resolution relating to the termination of non-renewal of probationary teachers. Dr. Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Beginning in early January, the administrative team begins difficult work studying enrollment projections and expected enrollment in all of our different schools, in courses at the community school, middle school, high school. We get our list of staff members, expected return from absences, staff are expected to return absences, all part of the difficult work of assessing staffing needs for the next year. Along with that, we look at probationary staff members who are in positions, whether or not, due to those returns from lethal absences, enrollment needs and so on, assess the needs for continuing with a number of our different probationary staff. That is long and a kind of arduous work, and I regretfully, in some cases, we don't have positions for some staff members, and for reasons identified here, some of our probationary staff are now in a position to return next year. This is in front of, and administration would recommend your approval tonight of that list, again, of probationary staff members that are in front of you. And I, I would just add that, you know, that is difficult work, and we have a lot of really talented people that we bring into the district, and unfortunately, for the next, we won't have a position for. So again, with that, administration would recommend.
Do you have a motion on A2?
Move to approve A2.
I have a motion, a second. Discussion.
It's already tough to process.
Any other discussion? I'd just like to thank our teachers who won't be returning for the work they gave us this year and, and wish them the best of luck should they not return. Some are brought back then later, should they need to issue themselves, but I just wanted to say thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Member Thurgood, would you please take a roll call?
Yes. Member Kettle.
Aye.
Member Lansdron.
Aye.
Member Rayfield.
Aye.
Member Tyson, both sides. Member Peterson.
Aye.
Member Luthner.
Aye.
And member Corcoran is absent. All ayes.
We'll move on to A3, adopt resolution relating to the non-renewal for the portion of a teacher's 21-22 assignment for which the teacher does not hold continuing contract status. Dr. Massey.
This item relates directly to an approval that the board gave us earlier this school year to provide daily subs that would be assigned to our buildings throughout the district. As part of that component, and that effort, was to extend music, elementary music via and via teacher specialists who are on contract for less than a full-time position, a .67 position, a .58 position. And the list in front of you is a list of folks that have a continuing contract at less than a full-time. We extended their contract to full-time in order to help fill open positions and subpositions throughout the year. So as part of our process of bringing our budget back to our base that we started the ULE, we will be removing the daily subs as well as these continuing contract staff who have an extension. So this piece would, would essentially terminate the extension from their continuing contract status. And you can see that detail in the list provided. Administration would recommend approval.
Do you have a motion, I agree?
Second.
Motion second. Discussion.
I, just for clarification, so the people on the list would return their, their existing hours, their existing continuing contract, that's correct.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Member Thurgood, would you please take a roll call?
Member Lansdron.
Aye.
Member Rayfield.
Aye.
Member Tyson, both sides. Member Peterson.
Aye.
Member Luthner.
Aye.
Member Corcoran's absent, and member Kettle.
Aye.
All ayes.
We'll move to A4, personal leave payout. Dr. Massey.
Yeah, in a similar vein, as a way to address teacher absences and the need to continue to have our teachers in the classroom, we're proposing, as we did last year, an extension of, and a double payout for personal leave. Each year, teachers receive, based on their years of service, personal leave days that they can use at their discretion for personal leave needs. Once a teacher accumulates per contract five personal days, that they can carry over from one year to the next. Any year, any days remaining at the end of the year, we propose here, we pay at a double rate from what's currently scheduled in the contract, as a way to add incentive for teachers not to take the personal count, but to stay in the classroom where, you know, obviously we wouldn't be searching for substitute for them during that time. We had great participation in this plan last year. We felt that it was a great benefit for us, and that this is a good plan to, again, have more of our teachers in the classroom and fewer subs. Administration would recommend approval.
Do we have a motion on A4?
Move to approve, A4.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion. Member Luthner.
Question. So this is different than sick leave, so we're not trying to make people stay sick?
No, this is simply related to personal. Good question.
Any other discussion? Member Luthner?
Okay.
See, do you know what this might have cost us last year?
I don't have those numbers in front of me. Chrissy Renberg may have a ballpark, but I wouldn't put her on, I guess I am putting her on the spot. Yeah.
I love the idea. I think it just incentivizes them to take that family vacation during the summer when they're off, because we do need them in the classroom, so.
For whatever expenditure it is, keep in mind that that's offset by the costs that we're not spending for substitute.
Thank you. One question for the superintendent. Do we, they come out of SIR funds, so with this, how would we continue to fund that after that?
Fortunately, last year, and again this year, we do have COVID relief funds through SIR acute funds, providing the financial resources to provide this accommodation. As those funds get spent and are no longer available, we'll have to determine whether or not we have the resources to do that in subsequent.
And then one more question. How are the substitutes? Are they, are they still, is it becoming a more broader, bigger group, or is it still just really a struggle? Because we know it's really been.
Yeah, at the height of the Omicron surge, we would have two, two and a half pages of absences on a given day. Today, we had half a page. And some of those are covered, we had maybe six or seven uncovered positions throughout the district, and then buildings have already assigned their daily sub that's been assigned to that building, or will utilize that position. It's not to say that there aren't days that we had classrooms that were struggling to fill, but it is far better than it was two months ago, even six months ago.
Good to know, good to know. And I really, I'm all for this too. I think that it's, it's so important for the students to have that consistency after what we've been through, through the pandemic and through everything, so I think this.
Member Kettle, just follow up. So this is a one-year, you know, regarding the SIF, you said one CSF fund, and go with God, and could look for another, sorry. But I mean, it's a one-year act, this isn't, I don't know.
Your, your approval tonight will be for this year and this year only.
Yeah, okay.
Hearing none. Member Thurgood, please take a roll call.
Member Rayfield.
Aye.
Member Tyson, both sides. Member Peterson.
Aye.
Member Luthner.
Aye.
Member Corcoran is absent. Member Kettle.
Aye.
And member Lansdron.
Aye.
All ayes.
We'll move on to A5, Public and Private Personnel Data Policy 406.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We're asking for your approval tonight after a first reading in the last month. You can see the different recommendations for language changes and updates to definitions and other related clarification language and references to statute. All these recommended changes and updates come from MSBA and in an effort to further comply with statute changes. Administration would recommend approval.
Motion very fine.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion?
Good question. So I know this is mostly in regards to people trying to get lists for sales within the district. Is there kind of a ballpark or? Is there kind of a ballpark number of how often we get requests like that?
Yeah, and the next policy probably really is more of a say to that in terms of data that's public.
Okay, I'm asking my question to really, sorry.
Any further discussion? Hearing none. Member clerk, would you please take a roll call?
Member Tyson Boatside.
Aye.
Member Peterson.
Aye.
Member Luthner.
Aye.
Member Corcoran is absent.
Aye.
Member Lansstrom.
Aye.
And member Rayfield.
Aye.
All ayes.
We'll move to A6, Use of Student Records Policy 505.
Yeah, the most relevant changes to this policy you'll find on page, on the first page, under Directory Information, we're looking to eliminate as public, as part of the public record, student telephone numbers and student email addresses and student parent email addresses. So those three changes, student phone numbers, student email, parent email, no longer being part of the public record. So, remember Luther's question earlier, should we get a data request? Those items would not be provided as part of the public record. How frequently do we get those requests? You know, they're often, Director Friedman, do you have a sense of?
Ten years.
Yeah, I mean, it's, it depends. Colleges, military does have access to records, depends on political campaigns and other advertising campaigns, and sometimes there's requests for all students of all families or certain grade levels and things like that. With that, administration would recommend approval.
Any other discussion, questions? Hearing none. Member clerk, would you please take a roll call?
Member Peterson.
Aye.
Member Luthner.
Aye.
Member Corcoran is absent.
Aye.
Member Lansstrom.
Aye.
Member Rayfield.
Aye.
And member Tyson Boatside.
Aye.
All ayes.
We'll move on to A7, Multicultural Gender Fair Disability Sensitive Policy 529.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The only change recommended here would be a change from the word handicap being replaced with persons with disability. With that, administration would recommend approval.
Any discussion on A7? Hearing none. Member clerk.
Member Luthner.
Aye.
Member Corcoran is absent.
Aye.
Member Kettow.
Aye.
Member Lansstrom.
Aye.
Member Rayfield.
Aye.
Member Tyson Boatside.
Aye.
Member Peterson.
Aye.
All ayes.
We will move on to, do we have a motion on A6?
I didn't either. I didn't. A6 or A7?
A7.
I didn't either. I didn't either.
That's good enough. Well, that happens. Let's move back to A6, then I'll entertain the motion.
Second.
All right. Discussion? Hearing none. Member clerk, now we must take a roll call.
All right. Member Corcoran is absent.
Aye.
Member Lansstrom.
Aye.
Member Rayfield.
Aye.
Member Tyson Boatside.
Aye.
And member Peterson.
Aye.
And member Luthner.
Aye.
All ayes.
All right. Apparently, we missed, we had a motion on A7. We did not? Well, do we have a motion on A7?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second? Discussion? Hearing none. Member clerk.
Member Kettow.
Aye.
Member Lansstrom.
Aye.
Member Rayfield.
Aye.
Member Tyson Boatside.
Aye.
Member Peterson.
Aye.
Member Luthner.
Aye.
And member Corcoran is absent.
All ayes.
We'll move on to A8, School Visitors Policy 704. Dr. Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As is the case with all of our policies, we do them somewhat on the schedule, and this policy has been up for review. Our policy committees reviewed this policy, we've had the first reading on this policy. We've actually taken quite a bit of feedback on this policy, and I know you have as well. There are some changes from the first reading, as you can see in the language that is stricken in the policy and added with an underline indicating new language. From the first reading to the second reading, tonight, you can see that in Section 3, visitors will normally be permitted beyond the school office only upon invitation that's been stricken from the policy. We've reworked some other pieces, language pieces within this policy. But essentially, the policy remains somewhat consistent with more clear language around conditions and situations through which visitors are permitted during school when learning is happening in kids' own classrooms. So visitors are certainly welcome. We have an open welcoming school culture and climate, we want families involved, our parents involved, but we want them coming in a predictable manner, in a way where parents and volunteers are invited in because there's a defined purpose for them when learning and teaching is taking place in the classroom. But that is not meant to be restricted, but to have some control over when visitors arrive, so that their purpose and their role in the classroom is conducive to learning and productive, so. With those changes in this policy, administration recommends approval.
Do we have any questions for Dr. Massey? Do we have a motion on A8?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and a second? Discussion?
And this is something that I think is addressed, and some of the reason why we have to rework it is there's a difference between I come and I want to visit my kids, specifically just me, and we're having the science fair, the doors are just open. So that's where some of the language is different in it, that we don't need to sign in every single person every time, or with invitation, saying like, okay, you're all invited to the science fair and the doors are open and you walk in. Try to accommodate that.
And those procedures will remain the same, whether it's a concert during the day, play during the day, an activity, a science fair.
Every single person needs to sign in every single time.
Any other discussion?
I just want to reiterate, as a member of the policy committee, as member Lansstrom, we spent an inordinate amount of time talking about this, and besides all the other feedback we got, the committee itself discusses for that. And I think for me personally, my concern about the whole policy was especially concerning the safety of our staff and of our students. And I think that's a very important part of this, is keeping everybody safe in the whole. Fair enough.
Yeah, I see.
Okay. Well, I just want to concur what member Kettow said, that, you know, we, when we passed our bans for buildings in 2018, we redid all our security, secure doors, secure entrances. So this just adds another layer to that, and I feel the same, that it's important for safety and security in our buildings with our students and staff. And I also like the wording in here about that, you know, their education is paramount and you have to have those boundaries, so that there is that respect there for what the learning that's going on in our buildings, so. I think this is a great policy. It's gotten stronger. I used to volunteer a lot. I think it still opens, leaves it open, you know, email or communication, I want to come in and have lunch with my student, I think that door is still open, it's just a different layer with those communications in place to keep those boundaries there. So thank you to the policy committee, because I heard that you guys were tired on that. Thank you.
Member Rayfield?
Yeah, I'd also like to thank the policy committee for taking a deep look at this, but I know when my kids gone through these schools, and the problem is not getting a chance to visit the school, it's having so many opportunities and being so welcome to so many different events, trying to figure out how to get to them, and I've always loved that about Forest Lake Schools, and these kind of minor changes to the policy don't change any of that. We're a welcoming school district who loves working with parents and, you know, love that involvement of parents in their kids' education.
Yeah, and I would concur with what you said, and also this, I appreciate especially the hard work the policy committee put in, and also the feedback from the public. As you can see, we're receptive to that feedback and wanted to make sure that we made a policy that met the needs of the district in order to keep things as secure and safe for the students and the staff as possible, but still maintain an open environment for folks to come and visit. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Member clerk, would you please take a roll call?
Member Tyson Boatside.
Aye.
Member Peterson.
Aye.
Member Luthner.
Aye.
Member Corcoran is absent.
Aye.
Member Kettow.
Aye.
Member Lansstrom.
Aye.
And member Rayfield.
Aye.
All ayes.
Motion passes. We'll move to A9, Authorized Administration to Request Bids for School Bus Camera Systems. Director Martini.
Thank you. A pleasure to be in front of you this evening. This is a big shout-out item for Forest Lake Police Department School Resource Officer Tom Coulter. He was actually solicited by the Minnesota Department of Public Safety to put him for this grant. They recognized his pride of grant work and how exceptional it had been in the past. Well, we secured one of the largest grants in the state for school bus cameras through his efforts, $270,000, over a quarter million. That's really exciting. But because of the size of the grant, we worked with three different firms to begin to develop specifications. We need to bid out things that are over $100,000. So we're asking for your permission to go out for bid. We would advertise in the local newspaper, open bids on the 20th of April, and then come back to you at your regular meeting with that result. So we ask for a vote on authorizing us to go for bids.
Any questions for Director Martini?
Does this cover all buses?
It will be for all buses. It's a school bus camera stop arm grant, so it's targeted to identify those violators of bus stop arms. We will be doing some exciting additions on top of this grant, since the DVR and those cameras are already present, we'll put some cameras on the inside of the buses as well, and go beyond the grant funding. It's very exciting.
With the stop arm camera, what are we going to do with that footage?
Those are then reported to the various PD.
Is that a quick question, Larry? So that's the amount that we received. Do we have any idea if it'll be covering that, or if it'll be?
It would cover school bus cameras or stop arm violations for all our vehicles.
So that amount covers everything?
Yes.
Excellent.
We're going to spend a little additional amount for internal cameras over and above this. We'll be able to disclose exactly what that is in May. Right now, we don't know what they're going to bid.
Great, thank you.
Any other questions, comments? I think it's just awesome that they, that we rewarded this grant and have this opportunity, especially with how dark it is, at times of the year when we have students out there crossing the road and cars passing buses with their lights on, with their stop arms out, so I'm excited to see this, and hopefully, for those folks paying attention, tell your friends that you will be caught next year. You will be ticketed. We do not want you passing the bus.
Our thanks to the SROs culture for thinking for us, that's just excellent work.
We're impressed with all our SROs, and this is incredible. What a collaboration.
Yeah.
Any further questions, comments? Do we have a motion to approve A9?
So moved.
Second.
Member motion and a second? Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Member clerk.
Member Luthner.
Aye.
Member Corcoran is absent.
Aye.
Member Lansstrom.
Aye.
Member Rayfield.
Aye.
Member Tyson Boatside.
Aye.
And member Peterson.
Aye.
All ayes.
Motion passes. We will go to A10, General Fund Budget Adjustment. Director Martini.
As member Luther alluded to, we visited these topics within our finance committee. Actually, each month, we review those revenue and expenditure patterns, and we were blessed with the presence of Jackie Eagle. She's a partner with our audit firm, and she did an analysis of state aids and property tax revenues, really was based on enrollment projections that the school district provided them. Unlike most of the surrounding school districts, we had an increase in enrollment this year. It wasn't as much as we thought it would be in the beginning. Our projections are showing, I think we were over 85 students beyond last October, when we analyzed it in October, but we've reduced that a little bit. So we're going to be reducing the state sources about $600,000. Now, I know that sounds like a lot, but it's about 1% of the total state sources, so it's not a significant reduction. We're also increasing other local revenue, $200,000. That's primarily due to the students from Jesaja Lakes where we're getting tuition. And then we're going to increase our uses of federal sources as well. So the net revenue adjustment's zero. We're also looking at increasing the benefits expenditure and capital expenditure. So we will be reducing the fund balance projection by about $500,000, but good news, it's still we're approximately two and a half million projected in. We ask for your approval for that adjustment as well.
Any questions for Director Martini? Hearing none. Do we have a motion on A10?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second? Do we have discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Clerk, would you please take a roll call?
Member Corcoran is absent.
Aye.
Member Lansstrom.
Aye.
Member Rayfield.
Aye.
Member Tyson Boatside.
Aye.
And member Luther.
Aye.
All ayes.
Motion passes. We'll move on to item 9.1, the first reading of Title IX, Sex Non-Discrimination Policy Grievance Procedure and Process Policy 510.
This again is a first read, so no action taken tonight on this. I would point you to the only recommended change from the policy committee on page 510-13, where we are looking to strengthen this policy reference to the comments or the evidence, because it's actually on page 510-7, where we reference the standard being clear and convincing on evidence as the standard for rulemaking and decision-making under this policy. So we strengthen the promise of the evidence, and then, as stated here, identifying the language on 510-7.
All right, so first reading. We'll move on to 9.2, First Reading Discipline Policy 515.
The only recommended change in this policy is on page 7. You'll see that under item 3 in Student Attire. We're referencing more clarification around calling, we refer to this policy for dress code.
And that's the first reading. We will move on to 9.3, The First Reading Student Attendance Policy 519.
I'll point you here to page 3, where we're adding language referencing what's considered an excused absence, giving authority, if you will, to school administration to address excessive actions, even though they're called in as excused. Oftentimes, not often, but periodically, we'll have a situation where a student is repeatedly excused, missing a lot at school, or they're excused, which would indicate that this excursion is okay. Well, sometimes, absences get excused when they shouldn't be excused, and we need to dig into that and hold some accountability to the parent and the student to get to school because of the learning loss. Adding that language and giving that influence and authority to school administration, you'll see that type of language on page 3.
Dr. Massey? We'll move to 9.4, The First Reading, The Medical Insurance Premium Change. Director Martini.
Thank you. We are going to share with you a few slides. Most of these are excerpts from the finance committee meeting that took place last month, which included slides that were shared with Employee Benefits Committee members the previous month. And we've been examining the pandemic spike for quite some time. Early in the pandemic, a lot of medical services were shut down, and a lot of folks are seeing a spike in claims now that things have opened up. We have had quite some time, we've only changed premiums twice since 2013, so I wanted to indulge you tonight with a few of these slides to just explain some of the strategies to the strategies to examine them. It's a first reading, so we're not asking for any action tonight. We're going to be back at Employee Benefits Committee the middle of this month. We're going to be back at Finance Committee reviewing this. But we will eventually be asking for action at your main meeting for premiums that will take effect July 1. And we are pretty certain it's going to be a double-digit increase, because we are seeing a projected 22% increase in claims based on our third-party administration's underwriting. So on the next slide, we have had some strategies in place now for a year or two, also Advantage Plan. We've got 17 participants. So the rest of this slide projects if we have more participants, we could get close to 800,000 of additional claim savings. We've reviewed a narrow surgical option, and this has been in place for about four or five years, but without incentive. You could see if it was fully accepted, about $400,000 of savings. And then a prescription drug strategy, if it was fully implemented and everybody with specialty or grand maintenance, if it was fully implemented, maybe $400,000. So you package that all together, almost 1.6 million of savings. Now, we're not foolhardy. Of course, we're not expecting full acceptance. But it is reasonable with the incentives that we've got in place to expect something in the neighborhood of $800,000. We received a renewal, that's the middle column, and the claims that are highlighted are 22.8% higher than current year. However, we have other fixed costs and all sorts of things that feed into the program. And we've also received one alternate in writing. We've got a few slides to talk about those various proposals. But let me show you some of the math. The claims translate that $10.9 million from the previous page is the first number. We've got other expenses related to operating the clinic, the third-party administrator, some of the HRA costs, various features that we offer. So our total cost to operate the plan is over $13 million. We expect that, just for example, with the education, we've already been out to the staff once now in person, we'll be out two times next year, talking about these strategies and getting engagement. We think it's reasonable that you could achieve half of those savings. We also have talked at Employee Benefits and at the Finance Committee about the need to replenish the reserve fund, because this is a separate fund outside of our operating. If we only did the education and we didn't implement any additional strategies, we anticipate a 19% premium increase, and they would be shown as single going from $770 a month up to $910, and family going from $2,050 a month up to $2,460. Now, we have also examined the idea of implementing a copay for the specialty medications. And this copay would be charged to the member if they don't use the strategy, which actually has an incentive crediting their HRA and zero copay. Strategy is providing the exact same medication, but through a different vendor. That could bring it down a couple percentage points to 17%. For one also, our third-party administrator offered up another idea, increasing the single deductible to $1,000 by $1,000, increasing the family deductible by $2,000. If that were done, we could get the premium increase down to 15%. I know I'll be fully recommending all of these strategies at this point. We have had some discussions with some of the faculty, some of the other bargaining units, about the next strategy, and that would be the idea of implementing a surcharge for the Social Advantage Plan. If you qualify and have your family members on a different employer's plan than ours, we offer the ability to have you go on that plan. We will pay the premium differential if it's higher, and we will pay all of the out-of-pocket expenses, because we prefer those claims beyond the other plan. Most of the traction for these types of plans comes from a penalty if you qualify and don't move. So that's the surcharge. That would be a $200 surcharge that could be implemented January 1 of 2023. We're going to continue to discuss this with the Employee Benefits Committee. We're going to continue to discuss this with Finance Committee. And what it could do ultimately is, you know, the 12% increase. But as you've seen, with claims expected to be almost 23%, we are going to face some sort of double-digit increase ultimately for July 1st. We'll continue to talk about it, and probably going to share next week, highlights, email to all employees about what we're faced now. I've asked Sally Ann Reynolds and Andy Stoyke to join me in editing an email to staff, just alert them. Not everybody attended the faculty meetings that we presented at, and not all of the playgroups were able to be with us in person. I open for questions at this point in time, but it is just the first reading. I wanted to get these significant topics in front of you, because it's strange, we've had the norm zero premium increase since 2013, except for the last two years, when the increases were minuscule.
Rayfield?
How's the, what's the utilization on our onsite clinic?
We spend, as an example, we spend approximately $170,000, that's part of that 2.2 million, to Fairview to run the clinic. And we receive claims data that shows the expenses would be about $250,000 if they were at other sites. They're free to us, of course.
Right.
If they were charged, it would be $250,000. But we think it's great usage, and that gives you some quantity.
Other questions?
I was just going to ask Larry, are they receptive to their surgical, or we're not to that point yet?
Well, we've had that in place for more than four years, but without the incentives that were on the slides. Many of the folks were, that have gone through that are comfortable and pleased with the process. The narrow network includes Summit Orthopedics. And so sometimes folks might be scheduled, but if they take advantage of this process or go through the nurse on the phone, they might have already been scheduled with Summit, not getting the discount, but now that they go through the vendor, will get the discount too. So it could be a situation like that. Or they might decide that these incentives are worth it to switch from TRIA or from TCO, because we're trying to take the margin out of healthcare. We're trying to, you know, prescription drug strategies, we're trying to take the profits out of Big Pharma.
Any further questions? Thank you, Director Martini.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks for that. I would recommend you review upcoming calendar dates, including the April 14 track meeting. And at this time, we will recess the regular meeting to go into a closed session to discuss contract negotiation strategy for the following bargaining units, directors, supervisors, principals, as well as individual employment terms for employees not covered under CBA. So with that, I would entertain a motion to recess.
So moved.